The January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two virtual meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey will be absent today. We already know that. Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Raviyan.
Present.
And Ms. Hare.
Present.
Um, our county auditor, Ms. Bowler.
Present.
And Legislative Council, Ms. Schewitt.
I'm here. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, we have six council members in attendance. We also have our county auditor and your legislative council.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, this morning, we are going to begin with a presentation from Mako, the Maryland Association of Counties. And we have with us today. Um, Michael Sanderson, who is the executive executive director of Mako and Laura Price, who is the president of Make- Mako. Thank you so much for joining us today. Uh, and before we begin, uh, Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the web, and allowing members of the public to watch the meeting using the Zoom application. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act.
All right. Thank you. And at this time, we are ready to um, let our guests begin their presentation. Again, Michael Sanderson, Executive Director of Mako, and Laura Price, Mako President from Talbot County. Thanks again for joining us. And you may have the floor. Oh, make sure to unmute yourself.
There we go. Sorry. Good morning, everybody. It's wonderful to see you all. I'm Laura Price, an elected member of the Talbot County Council and currently serving as Mako President. Um, I'm really excited about this because I get to visit all twenty-four jurisdictions and you all are number one. You are the first ones on my list um, for two thousand and twenty-two. So we're very grateful for your time and Michael and I are here to share what we can, um, but also to listen to your input and feedback as that is what helps Mako share its priorities by knowing exactly what your concerns and priorities are. Um, and speaking of priorities, I wanted to just remind you all of our list of four Mako initiatives that we went through a process starting with fifty or sixty different initiative ideas. And we had a subcommittee that whittled those down and whittled those down. And it's always a really difficult process um, to get it down. Um, you should have that as page one of your packet. Um, and I can just briefly go through them. Um, you know, the first one has uh, been something that has been on the agenda for the better part of ten, eleven, twelve years, and that is, of course, highway user revenues. Um, we have had it as a priority. We've had it as part of infrastructure before. Um, but this year, we thought with all of the federal funding, um, that this was the year that we can get this done, uh, not over a period of years, but just get it done in one fell swoop, um, because the the uh, the revenues and the money is there, you know, with some help from the federal government. Um, the second one is protecting local officials against threats and intimidations. And as you know, you know, we're all protected um, against that type of thing. But with what we've dealt with with elections and COVID, um, our health officials and our election officials have been under tremendous amount of pressure and people trying to intimidate them. So we really felt like this was an appropriate time to to bring this forward and and get at least them protected, possibly some other uh, elected officials, maybe our planning commission members, not included right now, but it's just something to think about that um, we get advised by many, many groups and they don't um, are not afforded the same protections that that we are as elected officials. Um, the third one is ensuring funding fairness and county role in elections. Uh, elections are at the budget for elections is the only one of our departments in 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 county government that all the decisions are really made at the state level, um, and we just have to write the check. So we definitely want to have more of a role at the table. Um, it has always been split fifty-fifty. Um, even if the cost goes up, uh, we still have to pay more of our fifty percent, but we want to make sure that the state continues to share that expense uh, equally with us. Um, and the last one is uh, emergency transport. Uh, right now, the the uh, reimbursement is only a hundred dollars. It hasn't been raised since I hmm, since the last millennia, right? Nineteen ninety-nine, I believe, is is the date. And um, you know, with the Medicare reimbursement, nothing else is recognized, whether you is more appropriate to transport to an urgent care or to your primary care, or even to have the EMTs and paramedics treat you right on site at home. Um, and especially now with COVID, we don't necessarily, you know, our hospitals are being overwhelmed. So, you know, transferring to a hospital is not necessarily the best thing. So we're trying to get it to go over the course of several years from a hundred to three hundred, but also to reimburse, um, even if you're not transporting to a hospital. So our subcommittee from all the, you know, various jurisdictions uh, gave input into that. We think it's a great slate to uh, do this year, and we hope we have your support with those. Um, and I'll close with saying, you know, we hope that the resources that Team Mako has put together for you and all twenty-four jurisdictions are useful for you. Uh, things like the weekly newsletter, the blog, the podcast, and most importantly, the helpful Mako staff that we have. And with that, I think, I'm not going to say he's the most helpful, but he is our executive director, and I'd like to turn over the floor to uh, to our director, Michael Sanderson. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair and Council Members. Pleasure to join you this morning. Um, I hope we're back in person and doing these sort of things uh, in the in the usual chambers, but uh, happy to be here under this setting today. Um, we're we're glad to do our best to try and do two birds at once, so I'll be very quick in wrapping up big picture stuff. We've submitted a packet of materials to you, and I I think Madam President said this very well. Uh, we want you to be aware that Mako is not only your advocate through policy issues, but also we want to serve as a resource for you all and for county departments and staff. Um, that's our charge and our mission. We want to be there for you any way that we can. So um, with the legislative session coming up, I'll just make quick mention. Um, this doesn't look like a circumstance where we will be on our heels fighting uh, in sort of a tricky budget times, which is, I don't know, three out of four years, that's where we are. We're worried about nips and tucks in the state budget and how they might shortchange local programs. Uh, in this environment, it doesn't look like that will be our focus for the coming year, but each election year tends to give us like an extra twist in the dive, so to speak. So the degree of difficulty is just a little notch higher um, because of the vagaries of of that process. So we know what to expect. We'll be ready to to serve and represent you on lots of different things. The initiatives Madam President walked through, we'll take an adv- uh, we'll take a proactive stance on a number of those issues, but we will respond to dozens and dozens of different proposals. So thanks to the members of the council who also serve on Mako's Legislative Committee. It's our guidance from elected officials that lends so much of our credibility and effectiveness in Annapolis. So with that, um, Madam Chair, with with your with your blessing, I'd like to spend a few minutes um, and speak to the second topic. I I know you all have a work session and you have work scheduled ahead to talk about uh, police reforms and and the local processes that are obliged under that legislation from last year. So I'm hoping to speak to that for a few minutes and um, and and try and get through some of the nuts and bolts. And I um, I might modestly say that I think my role here might be able to serve as the star on the map that says you are here. If you've ever been sort of lost at the amusement park and you look at the big map with, oh, here's the roller coaster and there's the water slide. Then there's a little red star that says, oh, you're here now amidst this larger map. So rather than spill into a whole lot of deep details, I'm sort of the cartoon map level. And um, I'm I'm very confident that you're very able, legal and policy staff at the county and the council level will will give you the further guidance that you'll need, the the actual tour guides and dozens and so forth, will walk you through the local specifics. But let me give you a few big picture comments that might help set the table for the decisions that you and your county colleagues across the state are are facing here. Um, short version is a number of bills on police reform passed during the two thousand and twenty-one session of the legislature. Uh, multiple different bills with with moving parts. Uh, the county is generally well situated to accommodate, a couple of them have already taken taken effect, but the largest among them and the broadest sweeping bill is House Bill six seven zero, six seventy. Um, that's a bill that that essentially wiped out the state's law enforcement officers' bill of rights, which created a bunch of procedural steps for administrative charging of law enforcement officers, um, made a number of different changes in oversight structure, uh, training expectations and the like for law enforcement officers. There are several pieces of that bill that need to be implemented at the county level, and that bill does not take effect until this coming July first. That's an unusual timetable for Annapolis, but it was their reflection of understanding that this was going to take some work between passage last spring and and it's taking effect this coming summer. So I want to speak to a couple of things. Um, when this date first got established for for your work session to talk about this, I said, this is perfect. Anarundel is going to crush it because you're, this this date is scheduled literally one week after the the time for the Police Training Commission to adopt its regulations that we were expecting to offer a bunch of helpful guidance and some more detail in the places that the legislation didn't really get into. So I was hopeful as of two or three weeks ago that today would be the perfect time to walk you through not only last year's bill, but also some sort of hot-off-the-press regulatory guidance from the state agency that's kind of been tasked with filling in some of the blanks. However, at their meeting last week, instead of adopting a set of regulations or some guidance documents that would be helpful and and give you even more specific guidance, uh, they have effectively passed on doing so, and it's now unclear whether the state's going to offer any of that more specific guidance. Uh, so I have less to speak about today than I had imagined, but for the most part, the absence of direct state guidance ends up being local flexibility. So in the absence of the state saying, do things exactly this way, um, for the most part, the courts and the plain reading of these laws will leave the leave you all with a with a fair amount of latitude as to how to implement some of these things, to the extent the state has not specified exactly how to do things. So I'll speak very briefly to the the two new bodies that each county, including Anarundel, will need to create uh, to implement the police reforms locally. Our number one, a police accountability board. So this will be a newly created body at the county government level that provides sort of resident opportunity to make complaints about conduct of law and law enforcement officers. So rather than necessarily those things coming to the police department, each county needs to create a board for this specific purpose that can receive concerns, complaints from your residents. Um, that needs to be created by the county government. There are some details about who needs to be on it, who needs to serve, and so forth. The the peculiar twist here is that this is a body created and overseen by the county, but it has province over law enforcement officers in every law enforcement agency within your county. So this is not just Anarundel County Police. It's also sheriffs because some of their duties tread into law enforcement as well. But it also would include uh, the City of Annapolis Police. Um, I believe you've got some some uh, you have a law enforcement agency that serves in the Crofton area. Um, and also, uh, to the extent there's a police force, I believe, on the Anarundel um, Community College campus, uh, their security force would be under the definition of law enforcement, so they would be subject to this as well. So if someone has a concern about the activities of an officer in any of those units, they would come to the county level Accountability Board. They'd be able to file concerns with that board for them to act upon. So this is a peculiar thing. Um, we've never had a county entity sort of overseeing a municipal police department or much less a campus police department. Uh, this is an unusual circumstance. I I will just say, um, consider yourselves lucky that you've got one major municipality and maybe some relatively small, smaller units on on top of that. Think of your neighbors in Prince George's County with, I think, as many as eighteen municipal police departments and a much larger campus at College Park, uh, with its own, I'm sure, very substantial police force. Uh, each county has its own challenges in implementing this, but that's one of the big tasks. Put together this body to receive concerns, complaints from your residents. Um, the second body, which is subordinate to the to the Police Accountability Board and is sort of in the middle of a disciplined process for the officer, is an administrative charging committee. This also, some of the details are spelled out in the bill that passed last year, and you'll get a lot more detail from from your staff going forward. But this is an intermediate step in the process when uh, when an officer has been charged or is is um, about to be charged, there's a complaint that's been uh, that's been founded that would be handed to the charging committee to make some initial steps in whether the officer should be formally charged um, uh, for for the things that have been raised in in the sort of complaint that would come to the the Accountability Board. So what the what the state legislature had in mind here was a principally um, civilian-led process to guide what happens if somebody has a concern about officer conduct. They've left this at the county level to implement. The total number of words in the bill that specify details on what these two bodies need to look like takes up less than two pages of text in an otherwise very long bill. This easily could have been fifteen pages long with lots and lots of details and specifics. Instead, you've got a skeleton that's been handed to you by the General Assembly, and it will be to the county and each individual county to to add sort of flesh to the bones. We had been anticipating that that the the State Police Training Commission might come up with some either a model or some guidelines on what they thought would be the best way to to spell this out. It looks like that will not be coming, at least in a regulatory way. If they wanted to do things through state regulations, they more or less needed to adopt those in January to get them published, comment period and so forth, to have them take effect by this spring, so they would be in place for adoption of a local law in time. So it seems to me that by missing that January window, we probably will not have formal regulations. So you have to be seeing whether you might get, you know, a five-page letter that says, here are some thoughts and general points of view from the state level. But um, we don't know what the state role might be from here to there, um, going going forward between now and July. So you'll hear more detail about those two bodies that each county will be obligated to create. I want to make one additional mention on the role of the General Assembly going forward here. Um, just with with Mako having been a stakeholder in this process last year and still being aware of where we sit. Um, I'll just say that there are a number of stakeholders in this process who were who were party to negotiations and testifying and so forth on the legislation last year. Lots and lots of different stakeholders feel that last year's bill was imperfect in some way or another. It's confusing. It's internally inconsistent. Um, it makes references that don't apply in every county. There are lots of stakeholders who would like to see the General Assembly in this coming legislative session come back to this topic and add some more detail or fix some references or things of that nature. So on a certain level, that sounds really appealing, right? A a simple remedy would be for the General Assembly to come back with sort of a a corrective or a fix-up bill in in the manner that sometimes happens with big, broad, comprehensive legislation, as it turns out, um, particularly when it when it was done piecemeal, as this police bill really was, uh, to come back a year later and do some technical sort of non-controversial cleanup things. Um, lots of different stakeholders would like to see that. I'll make a note that our sister organization, the Municipal, Maryland Municipal League, one of the things that they're seeking as one of their legislative priorities for this coming session is they'd like to allow their towns to opt out of that county-level police, the uh, Accountability Board oversight. They'd like to say if a if a town wants to create their own, like if the City of Annapolis wanted to create their own Accountability Board, that that would satisfy the state law. Um, I don't know that that would be controversial. I don't think this is a sort of turf battle with the counties and that the counties desperately want this kind of oversight. Um, so we'll see. There are lots of stakeholders who would like to see these issues be revisited. Um, I will ask you to put a pin in that, and please don't put all your eggs into the single basket of Annapolis is going to fix this and clarify everything that might require clarification. Um, a fix-up bill that resolves technical issues and sort of manages some non-controversial definition things and cross-references and stuff like that, that sounds easy. But as a practical matter, sort of like things become before your council, once there's an amendment to a bill, then suddenly you know that that means it creates a timetable change, or there needs to be public comment on the amendments and that sort of thing. General Assembly faces something very similar here. This is a bill that left an awful lot of hard feelings by members of the General Assembly last year. A sizable wing of the legislature felt this bill didn't go far enough with reforms. And another wing of the legislature felt like the bill went way too far. Now, they found a middle ground and found a the supermajority to override a governor's veto on last year's bill. But even a technical fix-up bill that just changes definitions in this section of law could become a platform for every one of those tough fights to be relitigated on the floor of the House and the floor of the Senate with a a roll-call vote and a lot of pomp and circumstance and so forth. The 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 practical and procedural way of going through even non-controversial changes to this section of law might be too much for the General Assembly to take up in an election year, a redistricting year, uh, you know, a pretty difficult circumstance. So um, my advice to counties all through this interim has been, please don't walk away from last year's bill, assuming that the troublesome things are just going to get fixed, and by April, we'll have a whole new game plan of what to do. I think the appropriate steps for each county to be taking are act in good faith, make progress toward a body that would comply with the bill that was passed last year, um, make some progress on on uh, local legislation to create an Accountability Board and a charging committee. Do all those things as if this is as clear as it's going to get. And in the event that we get some more clarity or that we get some increased direction, either from the state commission or from the General Assembly, all to the good, and you can refine things as you go later this spring. But I'm advising counties, please don't twiddle your thumbs until April on the assumption that this is going to get patched up in Annapolis, because I don't think that's a sure thing. So that said, uh, Madam Chair and Council Members, that's the bird's-eye view of what the state has done on police reform. There are another number of other elements of their legislation that I haven't gotten into. Um, Anarundel is well-positioned already for some of these things. In other counties, we're talking about a mandate to do uh, body-worn cameras for officers. Anarundel's police department is already there. Other places are at square one on that matter. Another 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 number of places where Anarundel is already well situated. Um, that's sort of the where we are at the moment, and I I expect that you will be spending some time on these topics in the weeks ahead. So I hope this is helpful for some framing of of those larger issues. With that, we're grateful for your time with the big picture on Mako relationship and Annapolis issues and so forth. And I think Madam President and I would both be happy to receive your questions.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I can already see I've got a couple colleagues with questions, so I will turn the floor over to Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, if we were to lower the bar, Mr. Sanderson, and I thank you for your excellent presentation, but if we lowered the bar for the General Assembly and said, can you just push out the date uh, from, you know, July first to October first or December first or, well, preferably not December, but not more than another year. I mean, that seems reachable, reachable, doesn't it? And if it if it is, then can we uh, go about sort of supporting a statewide advocacy for them to add more time?
Uh, I think county governments would not be the only stakeholder who would who would argue that a delay in the implementation date of this big bill would be sensible and reasonable. And I I I don't know whether that would be controversial. I I can't really tell you whether the advocates would say, we don't want another six months. We want this to happen on schedule. I I honestly don't know. Um, my my general advice, though, is no matter how innocuous or how non-controversial any change is, once there's legislation that goes back to what was passed last year and makes any change at all to it, um, the the General Assembly has a single-subject rule for legislation. So unlike the our friends over uh, over Route Fifty in Congress where there sometimes they'll take, you know, one bill and they'll toboggan fifty-five different things on it to turn it into this big, complicated legislative package. In the Maryland General Assembly, you have to stick to a single subject. But once the subject is the police reform legislation, now the floor is open for everything else that might be germane. So someone on the floor might put an amendment onto that exact bill just to change the timetable. It would probably be in order in the House of Delegates or the Maryland Senate for an amendment to say, well, I want to revisit the standard for use of force by an officer or the timetable that a charged officer is entitled to consult with legal counsel before speaking to investigators or all these other issues. There are literally dozens of different topics that the floor would be open for just by something as simple as let's change July one to January one. So um, I I would have to think that Mako and county governments would support a little longer window of time to get our shop in order, especially without the state guidance coming. I think it would be a reasonable request. Um, I just, I don't want to leave you with a sense that I think that's a layup because I don't think any fix here is easy for those reasons.
Thank you. And uh, by the way, I love your podcast.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate it. That's the Conduit Street Podcast, and I would encourage you all to listen. And Council Member, we will be getting an invite to you for an intro intro pitch ro- very promptly, I promise you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, thank you both for being here today. You you both presented uh, very important information. Um, Madam President Price, I like to thank you for pointing out um, the unfunded mandates that we often talk about in Mako sessions. Um, it it's really critical that um, we have that opportunity in within Mako because those unfunded mandates from the state put each individual county under a considerable amount of budgetary pressure. So I appreciate you making that point, which dovetails into my question for Mr. Sanderson. Um, this legislation has already been discussed among um, my colleagues. We know that it's coming in future weeks. You did mention the Training Commission, and that is something um, that came up in my discussions with the administration. We know that um, there's not a lot of guidance. And I was asking, well, can we do this or can we do that? And and the response was, well, we're hoping we're going to get this guidance, knowing that that is not there now. Um, my question to you is, is the option or um, opportunity to say to the Training Commission or send them a list of questions, would it be off the table to think that they could potentially respond with a report or some kind of recommendation, almost like a legal opinion, to that then gets disseminated to the county, the counties statewide?
Um, Council Member, it's a very fair question and and one that I don't think that there's a pinpoint answer to. Um, we are in a peculiar circumstance here, and I I don't want to evade the question. Um, first of all, I'm not an attorney and I'm not um, I'm not in a position to offer legal advice. But as as a matter of implementing state law, um, it's a curious circumstance. There's one sentence in this, I don't know, forty-page bill. There's literally one sentence that calls upon the Police Training Commission to 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 adopt regulations, implement a whole subsection of law that includes everything I've talked about and a whole lot more. Um, this happens sometimes when the General Assembly passes like a new environmental regulation, and they say to the Department of Environment, you passed the forty-five pages of regulations on who files what report by what day and all that sort of stuff. I I'm not sure that they meant that the Police Training Commission is going to be the boss of all these decisions. Uh, the the statute seems to make the county the decision-maker on lots of different stuff. So it's not as simple as you all have to do whatever the Police Train- Training Commission says, and we're just waiting for what that is. Rather, they're in sort of an informal fill-in-the-blanks role here, which is, if not unique, it's at least peculiar. Um, I I would be hopeful that in the weeks ahead, not even months, but in just the weeks ahead, that counties will benefit That counties will benefit from something. Whether it's some guidance from the Office of the Attorney General. Uh, who sometimes does weigh in on these sorts of things and has more legal standing than even the state agency. Uh, to offer guidance and the, the benefit of following somebody's advice, whether it's from the Police Training Commission or from the Attorney, Office of the Attorney General. Either one of those that gives your county a much firmer leg to stand on with the measures you've decided to take. So um, I, I think the general advice that I would offer is. Act in good faith and make progress toward the bodies that the legislation envisions and do your best. Um, if, if it turns out we get guidance documents from the state, then that would fill in some of the details, but. I, I don't think that there's a certainty that that's coming. Just, just based on what we saw last week with that State Commission. We were drumming our fingers, waiting for a big report and a set of regulations. And instead they effectively punted the football. So in the event that all, what we've got today is all we've got. Um, there are some, for what it's worth, there are some counties that literally do not have a human being who lives in their county. Who fits some of the classifications that need to be on these bodies. So, so it's, it's a, it's a peculiar, so we don't have a retired administrative law judge in our small county. Who could serve in this capacity. How do we, we cannot possibly comply with the law or there's one such person, but he says he doesn't wanna do it. Um, anyway, I, I, I digress, but uh, I think the, the short answer is we've gotta do our best. Let's hope there's a little more help coming, but even if there's not, there's a framework to work with. And I think the county level staff is gonna guide you appropriately on, on, you know, getting, getting you on the right track.
Um, I'm gonna jump in and ask a question, Mr. Sanderson. So um, you mentioned the possibility of the General Assembly taking up, um, you know, legislation that might provide some tweaks that are maybe needed. Um, for places where there's um, you know, inconsistencies or um. You know, maybe timeline or something like that. Um, when I've heard about kind of the rumblings. Um, about what topics are going to be addressed in the General Assembly, I haven't heard any of that and I'm just curious if you had. Have, has, um, has that been something you've heard actual rumblings about that's uh, you know, our legislators might uh, take up?
So um, I, I won't claim to be a universal authority on this matter. I will, I will tell you that. Uh, our, our colleagues in law enforcement, the, the chiefs of police and the sheriffs and their associations and their leadership. Ha- have raised, I think, eh, on the order of a dozen technical issues where there are. Um, definitions that are either uh, probably incorrect or impractical or vague. Where there are timetables that um, are, they would probably judge to be unworkable, things of that nature that. Um, I, I, I don't think that what the police chiefs and the sheriffs might seek on this bill would be. Let's just reverse the whole philosophy of the bill, right? The idea of, of, of civilian oversight. They're not saying let's go revisit all that sort of the heart and soul of the bill. They're just saying, hey, this framework. You know, ten days for this or thirty days for that. We probably can't do that and here's why. So things like that that are relatively unexciting unless you're. The person in the Anarundel County Police Department required to do these things by those timetables. For that person, this is a high priority. They wanna know, you know, that they could, they could do their job. So th- there are a number of things of that nature. Um, I, I did mention the references to some of the specific members of these bodies. Uh, in my judgment, they were written around large counties, sort of like Anarundel sized and larger. And when you try and apply that template to smaller counties like. Council Member Price's Talbot County and those who are even smaller than Talbot. Um, for jurisdictions where it's the sheriff and deputies who provide principal law enforcement. And may have, you know, fifteen officers for the entire county. Um, a lot of this structure is o- overdone and the references are probably too specific for smaller jurisdictions. Um, there are a lot of things like that, like these are, these are unsexy and not super thrilling topics to tend to. But if you're on the ground implementing, they feel awfully important. So. Um, I think there's a compelling case to pass a follow up bill to tidy this stuff up. And in my mind, the judgment is, is that gonna happen during the election year now? Or potentially wait another thirteen months and happen in the twenty three session? Um, maybe even after we've had some implementation and we've got some nicks and dents from. You know, there's an open seat in this county because no person can fill this role or. This, this municipal department is missing their deadlines because they have to do these things and they take twenty eight days, even though the law says ten. Um, I think either way is possible, but tha- that's the flavor of the kind of things that are coming. What I don't know is any detail on what. The, the various representative organizations for officers. They're a major stakeholder here too. So the F O Ps and the like across the state. Are also stakeholders and I'm sure that they have their own comparable grievances with the specifics of the bill. And I suspect many of them are non substantive as well. So there's probably another side of the story that I wouldn't be as well versed in. So it's things of that nature, I think.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanna ask one more question that I don't think is related to my first at all, but um. You know, we have some state level law enforcement agencies. Um, and I'm just curious, how are they addressed in the law? And, and a lot of them operate in Annapolis, um, in my district and um, you know, all over the state really, but how are they addressed in the law?
Uh, an, an excellent question and another one that is even less clear. Than this curious circumstance with like a campus police department. So uh, do state police. Uh, function as a unit within their barracks where they're geographically located? Or do they all exist as a law enforcement agency with one central location? And the answer is we don't know. Under this bill, it's not clear. The, the idea of a complaint against a state police officer or the D N R police or another entity like that. Going through a county level process. I strongly suspect would be objectionable to those agencies. And I suspect that's not really what the General Assembly wanted. It's another perfect candidate for, let's clarify that that's not what we meant. That, that, you know, the, the barracks that happened to be in Queen Anne's County. Should not necessarily go through the Queen Anne's County Accountability Board, right? I, um, I cock my head in a dog fashion to suggest that that's kind of where the, the answer to your question lies. Somewhere in exactly that level. So a great candidate to tidy up when they get to it.
Okay, so no clear answer. I appreciate that. Sometimes no clear, no answer is a, is a good, as good as answer as you get. Um, I, do any of my colleagues have any additional questions? Um, I appreciate the questions you've asked. They've been very helpful for me as well. Well, with that, I'm seeing um, no hands, but lots of smiles, um, which I assume are in appreciation for your time this morning. Um, I'll just say again, thank you very much for coming to, um, you know, talk to us and. Um, you know, giving us the lay of the land on some of the things that you're working on and specifically the police accountability law that passed in the General Assembly last. Um, gosh, it's been a year now, last year. Um, so thank you and um. Uh, we appreciate your time here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us. We, we enjoyed it.
All right, let's see. Um, we're going to move on to our legislative agenda, the different items that we have. The first bill on our agenda is Bill one thirteen dash twenty one. And um, this is a legisla-, or excuse me, an um, executive, um, county executive bill. So if. Mr. Baron, you would like to take the floor and uh, give us a little, um, give us a little info and we can ask some questions. That'd be great. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the Administration. Uh, joining me this morning from our schools is Mr. Shagnovich and Mr. Stewart. Uh, we also have Lori Blair Klassmeyer from the Office of Law, Lynn Miller from O B Z. And our Deputy C A O for Land Use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. Um, happy to answer any questions on this bill. As you guys will recall, the, the county has brought forth a number of these bills. Uh, this is the school, annual school chart. Um, one thirteen approves the twenty twenty three school utilization chart. Based on projected enrollments in the coming years. Uh, Council Members recall, we passed eighty five twenty one. Which continues the levels of the school chart for what is determined as, as open or closed. Um, just as a refresher, that's ninety five percent state rated capacity for elementary and middle schools. And a hundred percent for high schools. Um, our folks are here to answer any questions if you have any.
Um, Ms. Herr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District Seven. Um, Mr. Seknovich, I think this is probably a question for you. I know, um. During twenty twenty, a lot of students, I believe there was a, you know, a number of students that either were homeschooled or. Otherwise left the school system. And I know there was some discussion about whether those students might return or not. How, if at all, was that accounted for in this chart? I, I can see that there is a school in my district that was closed. Last year that is now going to be open this year and it's um, just barely under the ninety five percent threshold. And so before we vote on that. I'm trying to understand if, if that's partially related to some of the unenrollment from twenty twenty or whether you all accounted for that in your. Projections moving forward, if that, if that was very wordy, but if that made sense.
Certainly, and, and thank you, uh, Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer. Uh, so there's a number of things that uh, that impact enrollments. Uh. Absolutely, there are these micro events like the uh, pandemic and the number of students that. Uh, elected to uh, potentially avail themselves of homeschool or private school opportunities. So our enrollment did decline. Uh, more drastically at the initial outset, uh, the first year of the pandemic, we're now essentially in the second. So our enrollments haven't, have recovered, um, Councilwoman Herr. But have not recovered fully to the level that we had projected they would have been had it not been for. The pandemic. So we, we're up, but not up as much as we would have thought twenty four to thirty six months ago. We naturally do have to recalibrate these, um, these enrollment projections each and every year. Uh, that's a requirement of the state and as an external entity to our efforts. The Maryland Department of uh, Planning uh, does external uh, calculations and invalidates our methodology and our numbers as well. And, and we've gotta be pretty precise, right? Because A, we wanna do right by our own taxpayers and B. Uh, we've got an obligation to the, to the state to get it right as, as well. Um, so we've mostly been talking about the, you know, pandemic related effects, but. Internal to that, they are reevaluated for other factors. And I'll give you a, a, a very, a very simple one. That affects middle schools quite often. Uh, Councilwoman Herr, we can have a very large eighth grade. That is exiting a school, a middle school, being replaced by a cohort of smaller fifth grades. Coming into that sixth grade level. So on a net, net basis. We, we've exited more students out of that school. So middle schools do, do tend to fluctuate a little bit more so. Than uh, than our elementary schools, for example, that, that do tend to be steady state. Uh, the last thing I'll say is obviously we do monitor growth and, and development and migration patterns as well. So that's a. That's a constant, no matter what year we are, uh, as you've probably uh, heard from uh, Budget Officer Tom Bauer. Uh, we are seeing some very high recordation and transfer. Uh, levels uh, on the, on the growth and development side. So that is aiding the enrollment growth somewhat, but again. Uh, those families are making their own decisions as well, uh, be it public school, private school or potentially homeschool. So unfortunately, I gave you a long answer to a long question. I apologize.
Thank you very much. Um, you, you hit the nail on the head. It's, it's a middle school, it's Central Middle that I'm asking about. Do you, do you happen to know if. There was a large eighth grade that left and a smaller fifth grade that came in? I realize it's very specific to one school. I'm just, since you mentioned it, I was curious if that's part of the issue at Central.
If you hang on a second, I think I should be able to answer that question.
Oh, great. Thank you. And if not right now, I can take it later too, if that, if that.
So let's do that. How if I answer it uh, by way of an email and then I can give you the, the specifics, but we do have that information.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Mr. Shagnovich, thank you for being here this morning. Um, in looking at the attached documents, I have a question on two of the schools that have changed in um, the fifth district. So um, Severna Park Middle School is going from closed to open. And the difference, if I'm reading this chart correctly, is two seats? Is that correct? I'm sorry, five.
So we're, uh, Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer. So according to uh, Bill eighty five twenty one referenced by. Um, by Mr. Baron, that is correct. That, that school would be open by five seats essentially. It would have five seats remaining available. Uh, to be taken up and by virtue of that, it is open. That is calculated at that ninety five percent uh, level of state rated capacity.
Right. I, perfect. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding the chart correctly. And so in that same thought, then um. Belvedere Elementary in the Broadneck Cluster is closing due to. A lo-, um, an overage or a lack of two seats by that formula.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So uh, Belvedere Elementary School would be essentially short two seats. At that ninety five percent threshold of state rate capacity. And therefore it would be a closed school according to the A P F ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna jump in here and ask a question. So the two high schools that serve District Six. Um, which are actually primarily Annapolis High School and then a small piece of District Six is served by, actually there's three. Uh, South River High School serves a piece of District Six as well, but um, the other two high schools um, in District Six. Are two of the most overcapacity in the county. And obviously Old Mill High School, there's, you know, we, we've got a, we, we can see the future of how that um, overcapacity. Is going to be resolved, but um, I'm curious if there's any long range plan. Um, to address the overcapacity, you know, the one hundred and ten percent utilization at Annapolis High School.
Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer. Uh, at, at the present, no. Uh, in that we are, uh, we're doing a comprehensive redistricting of the upper. Uh, essentially two thirds of the county predicated upon the uh, construction of the uh, two old mill schools. And then the cascading effect from that. Uh, in the, in the southern part of the county, uh, for example, we would uh, likely have to do a redistricting effort. Um, that would look at, for example, Annapolis, uh, South River. And Southern High School, uh, potentially, but that is not, that is not contemplated as part of the Old Mill project. The Old Mill project is really looking at those uh, five or six, six clusters that are. Either in Old Mill or are directly adjoining, not going as far afield. Uh, my suspicion of uh, Madam Chair would be, once we do clean up sort of that northern two thirds of the county. That we would swing back around and take a look at the, at the bottom one third of the, the county because it's not as um. Not as intertwined, uh, nor is it as dependent on the capital uh, construction program.
So more likely to be addressed by redistricting, once that, that plan is finalized?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just had one more question. Um, looking at the Severna Park Feeders. Um, Oak Hill Elementary is short a hundred and thirteen seats and is closed. If I remember correctly. It was the last utilization chart last year that closed this elementary school. Um, however, we had been hearing for a year, um, if not more, how overcapacity this elementary school is. We're now seeing the one hundred and thirteen seats in the chart because of the way the formula works. And how we have to wait for um, affirmative numbers from the state. Can you just for the record, for anyone who might be listening in on this for the first time? Explain how that works timing wise from year to what's on the ground? If I'm making sense in that question. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, uh, thank you for that question. Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer for the School District. So you know, thi- this is a little bit of a, a perennial. Uh, issue. So we have really a number of factors that are overlaid on top of each other. We've got uh, actual enrollments. Uh, which we uh, do by an official canvas on the thirtieth of September. Uh, state, that's actually statewide. So my comments are all statewide. Uh, but still applicable here to Anarundel County. So there is uh, an actual informed. September thirtieth canvas of each and every one of the schools. Uh, the second factor that's always at, at play, uh, Councilwoman F- Fiedler is what we call the rollover. So uh, to a, to a fairly high degree of accuracy, we know. Uh, for example, how many third graders are gonna become fourth graders? How many fifth graders are gonna become sixth graders? So that rollover effect happens each and every year. The third factor is that we get a tremendous amount of information from your planning and zoning office, from the Maryland State Department of Planning, and from actual conversations with the development community about home sale, pace rates, et cetera. So there's a, a lot of information that goes into the calculus. Some of it is, is a little bit backwards-looking, which is what I believe you're referring to, in that the actual enrollments, by the time that they are certified, they're actually a year old to inform this chart. There's, we've tried as, as well, Madam Councilwoman, many jurisdictions are out of state that, that skin that onion a different way, but it's really a, a timing issue. And it is one, I will say, that the adequate public facility ordinance work group or task, task force, the planning and zoning and the admin has assembled is currently looking at. But yes, that, that delay factor on actual enrollments is, is in fact one part of the puzzle, but it is more layered than that as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Allison Pickard, D2. I, I think, I think this is the first chart we've seen with the new configuration, which I find to be extremely helpful, not only for me as we're making decisions, but also for the public. When we look at each feeder, we can see where we have schools that are overcapacity and schools that have, that are undercapacity. I think that's really helpful and it does lend itself to the coming discussions about redistricting, whether it's comprehensive redistricting or redistricting inside feeders to better balance out. So I want to thank the school system and OPZ for taking my recommendation and presenting the data in a, in a more tells, that tells a different, that tells the whole story. So I just want to thank y'all for doing that. I know it's a little extra work, but it is, it is really helpful to see it this way. So thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional questions, sorry, let me get my agenda back in front of me. We will move on. And thank you very much, Mr. Zacknovich, for being here and answering our questions today. We will move on to Bill Number 114-21. And this is with respect to late penalties in Public Works. So another county executive bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from DPW is Karen Henry and Kim Clooney from Finance. Karen McQuade and Billy Penley and from Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. This bill and the, in 115 are, are, for technical reasons, sort of dealing with the same issue. And this is a, one of those bills that you say, really, we need a bill? But yeah, really, we need a bill. What we have is the, the county code has limitations on the flexibility of our, our folks in Finance, our folks in DPW as they're, they're collecting citizens to address external factors outside of the resident's control that are a result of the state of the emergency or a billing error or postal service delays. These are all things that are affecting the ability for a resident to make a payment on time. So the payment is submitted, sent in the mail, the post office takes a long time, as we're all aware of the current problems at the United States Postal Service. It arrives here late. We are, we have significant limitations on by code, the flexibility that we can make to make a determination. You don't need to pay that late fee. So this bill and the following one are, are meant to address and give our, our agencies more flexibility to be more responsive to folks who are trying to do the right thing, but through no fault of their own, run into a delayed payment. With that, happy to answer any questions. And on the technical stuff, I have these experts here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Barron, I like this bill. My only question is, there's a few different reasons in here that are enumerated as a reason for waiving the late fee. The first one is a result of county error. And I guess my question is, it sort of seems to me like it shouldn't be discretionary if it's a county of error. It should be mandatory if it's a county error that the person's late fees are waived. I mean, if, is there any objection to making it a, the controller shall waive the penalty if the determination is that it was a county error and may waive the, the penalty if it's some other reason beyond the homeowner's control?
I, I'll defer to the experts. My initial reaction to that is, that makes sense. However, would we need to make a determination that it was actually the county's error instead of somebody just looking at it and saying, yeah, let's just waive it? So you might be actually adding another hurdle for the resident to jump through. So I'll, I'll let the experts actually answer that.
Okay, thanks.
So maybe that's for law first and then Ms. McQuade.
Thanks for letting us know who, who you wanted to answer that. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Ms. Hare, I don't, I, I don't see a problem with that. I think that, you know, the Office of Finance would say that they would always waive it whenever there is a, a county error. But I don't necessarily see an issue with changing that may to shall in that situation. I think that the, the may language would need to stay there with regard to the other situations to give that discretion to, to finance, to make sure that it was something that was affecting multiple customers.
Sure, agree. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I just want to say, I like this bill as well. I think Ms. McQuade and Ms. Henry, we've emailed you on several circumstances and this bill had it been in place would have addressed those issues. So I appreciate it.
All right. Seeing no additional questions from my colleagues, let's move on to Bill Number 115-21. And this is another admin bill. So Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Yep, and the DPW folks are going to drop off, but our experts from Finance are, are going to stick around for this one. Same basic situation as 114. Really, we need a bill. Yeah, really, we need a bill. So this bill will, will fix and allow flexibility when there are these errors or delays that are outside of a resident who is doing the right thing's control.
Seeing no questions from my colleagues, which makes sense, is very straightforward. Let's move on to Bill 116-21, another admin bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Now unmuted, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Lori Rhodes, our DCAO for land use. And from OPZ, Ms. Miller and Ms. Kenny from Law is sticking around. 116 Updates Language Regarding Nonconforming Uses Within Our Zoning Code. The purpose of this bill provides for a longer period of time that would not be counted when determining that a nonconforming use or a structure that is damaged may be repaired, reconstructed, relocated, provided that the nonconforming status of the property does not result in a greater nonconformance than previously enjoyed and that it is located on a lot that it was originally located. Again, one of these sort of, we need another, we need a bill for this to, to clarify the code. Seems pretty common sense. However, with a lot of technical bills that, that come forward, you'll, you'll see people after we introduce it raise some concerns. We are currently working on an amendment. Unfortunately, it's not ready to address some technical stuff that has come up. Ms. Rhodes is here to answer any questions and, and we will get staff and council members an amendment as soon as we have it for your review.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I appreciate the essence of this bill. I know we try to stay away from nonconforming use or creating nonconforming use as much as possible. I was just wondering for a matter of clarification, if an example could be given where this would have been useful?
Yes, thank you. Lori Rhodes, Deputy CAO for Land Use. I actually thought of an example because I know it's kind of hard to wrap your head around nonconforming uses because you could have a nonconforming use that's not allowed. Then you could have a structure that is allowed, but it's nonconforming to bulk regulation, so it does get confusing. So the example in this case would be, like, say, for example, a boathouse with a significant hole in the roof and it no longer serves the purpose of protecting the boat from the elements. So the previous owner neglects to repair that hole and then decides to sell the property to a new owner who wants to repair the boathouse to make it functioning. That new owner would be required to register the property as nonconforming. However, because the use of the boathouse had ceased for more than a year, they would be unsuccessful, would have to appeal it to the Board of Appeals. And if the Board of Appeals did not reverse the denied decision, they would have to remove that boathouse. So this bill would offer more time for those situations where a new owner may slip through the cracks where a previous owner failed to repair a structure to allow them additional time to do that. So that's pretty much the essence of this bill, to give more property rights, to allow property owners to repair these damaged structures, but also retain the integrity because we still want to protect property values. So if a structure is damaged by fire or natural catastrophe, we want to ensure that those structures are repaired in the appropriate time. So that's what kind of makes it a little complicated.
Exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again. Another relatively straightforward bill, seems like good legislation. Next up, we have 117-21, and this is County Executive with Ms. Pickard. So whoever would like to take the lead in talking about 117-21, you may have the floor.
Mr. Barron, you can have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. I skipped bringing up my notes on that one in preparing. So here I am. I got both with me again, Ms. Miller from OPC, our Finance Team, Ms. McQuade and Ms. Penny, Penley, excuse me, Billy, and Lori Blair Klaasmeier from our, our Deputy County Attorney. Hey, this bill, I want to thank Councilwoman Pickard for working on it with us. This bill extends the expiration date of the commercial redevelopment area program through April of 2032. This program provides tax credits to incentivize specific types of improvements to qualifying properties. We're happy to extend this tax credit. This tax credit has been in place. Looking at the legislative history, going all the way back, I think, to 2001. It sunsets at a regular clip and this bill extends that sunset for 10 years. Hope you'll pass the bill at the appropriate time and happy to answer any questions. But another straightforward one for us.
All right. Well, moving right along. Next up, we've got Bill 118-21, another admin bill.
Oh, self-apologies. The administration and Lori Blair Klaasmeier is joining me. I think Ms. Molden from Budget or possibly Trump Bauer is, is hanging around. Modifies the purpose of the Sherwood Forest SCBD to allow roads and solid waste collection as allowable expenses. This came after 87 of the residents of the SCBD voted in favor of the addition. The real cost of roads and solid waste collection will be assessed through the special community benefit. And any administrative cost to the county will be offset through our administrative fee when the taxes are collected. Happy to answer any questions. And again, pretty straightforward bill. Folks in the community want it. We should pass this bill at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron. Seeing no questions, we will just keep on cruising right along. All right, we are moving into 2022 bills. Bill 1-2022, this is another county executive bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Administration. I'm not sure if Mr. Teru is with us or we have Mr. Trump Budget to talk about this one. This is a supplementary appropriations bill. Oh, good, we have Mr. Teru. 122 makes some grant appropriations to the Health Department, Aging, OIT, ACDS, and the State's Attorney's Office. The appropriations total about $12 million, of which 10 million is directed to the Revenue Reserve Fund to bring the amount to the maximum allowed under the county. We are maximizing our rainy day fund. This is something this council and this county executive have said is important. And then we've, we're receiving and recognizing all of those grants to those agencies I listed. Happy to answer any questions you may have and will be at, still at the appropriate time.
All right. We are cruising right along today, going on to Bill Number 2-22, another county executive bill.
Yep, this is a dredging bill. We have Mr. Braun from DPW, Ms. Carrigan, sorry, Ms. McAllister from Budget, and Ms. Blair Klaasmeier from Office of Law. This transfers 97,000 of general county bonds from the Franklin Manor dredging capital project to the Cox Creek dredging project. This transfer should allow the county to support the completion of the Cox Creek dredging under the revised fiscal analysis. Our folks from DPW and Budget can answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. I just want to make sure there's no, there's no detriment to the Franklin Manor dredging project as a result of this transfer.
We'll let the experts at DPW, Mr. Braun.
David Braun, Department of Public Works. No, there's not. We actually realized some significant savings on that project, both with a very good bid and by using a beneficial use site rather than the county's DMP site for the placement of material, which saved us a lot of money over what we had originally budgeted there. So we're in good shape with that project still.
Best answer ever. Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to Bill Number 3-22. Mr. Barron, again, you have the floor.
We're just cruising today. Joining me from personnel is Ms. Rickers Atkinson and Lori Blair Klaasmeier sticking with us. And I think we have Mr. Teru, if he had a budget question, but I think this is mostly a personnel bill. 322 adds positions in the classified and exempt service. It adds a resilience authority director at grade E7. This is the approach that's paralleled by the Economic Development Corporation, where the Director of EDC is an employee, but the corporation remains an independent entity. This change will allow, will offer the stability to a successful candidate and allow Anarundel County to compete for high qual, highly qualified individuals for our resilience authority. And in the classified service, we're adding three positions to the Sheriff's Department to support the establishment of their body worn camera program. If you recall, in Mr. Sanderson's briefing earlier, the state has required us to have every law enforcement officer equipped with a body camera. Anarundel County is way ahead of the state deadlines on that. Our county police department is, is fully up and Anarundel County is way ahead of the state deadlines on that. Our County Police Department is fully up and running, and the sheriff is tracking right behind us, and this bill will help get those positions needed to implement the program. Hope you will, oh, sorry, and the funding for these positions is included in Bill one twenty-two. Hopefully, you will pass this bill when we get to the appropriate time when it's heard.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think this is probably a question for the Office of Personnel, and you may have explained this in the past, but the, in the fiscal impact side of things, when they're talking about salary minimum and maximum, and then with the, with the benefits, on the salary piece of it, how do you go about determining what that salary is going to be and what that grade level is going to be for these positions?
Ms. Atkinson, you want to take that? And you're muted if you're talking. Nope, you just unmuted yourself and remuted yourself. Ms. Atkinson, you're still muted.
Can you hear me now? I'm so sorry. Jackie Atkinson from the Office of Personnel. When we add a new title to, we go through a class and comp study, and that's exactly what we did. So we looked at the duties for resilience authority director because we already had determined what that position would look like because we had put out an announcement to hire somebody on a temporary basis. So when we did that study, it was appropriate that it was at the E seven level to pay any fees within there. So there is a science to doing that, and that's exactly what we did, and we do that each and every time that we're creating a new position. Does that answer the question?
I think so. And so then those salary minimum and maximum, that's the same minimum and maximum for anybody that's an E seven?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no additional questions, we will move on to Bill four dash twenty-two, another admin bill. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Baron again. Joining me at the table is Ms. McAllister from Budget and Ms. Blair Klaasmeier in the Office of Law. I've made this joke, I think, now on four bills, but it worked there. It's going to work on the fifth time. This is another, do we seriously need a bill, Bill? Yeah, we need a bill. This bill removes a reference to a mapping company that no longer exists. They're out of business, which exists in our code. The new bill would simply require a map or location reference if applicable. So this is specific to the capital budget and capital program. You know how you see a map in the book. The way the code's written, you're supposed to use a map from this one specific company. That company no longer exists. The world has changed. We have G I S and all sorts of cool new tools. So this is an easy bill. You're still going to get your maps.
All right, seeing no questions. We are going to come back to Bill number five dash twenty-two. Mr. Pruski had to step out for just a few moments, and I know he really did want to give everyone the lay of the land on this bill. So hopefully, we can bring him back. And same with Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-one, also Mr. Pruski's resolution. So our last item before we hopefully can jump back to Mr. Pruski's items is Resolution number one dash twenty-two, and this is a County Executive item. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the Administration again. Ms. Blair Klaasmeier from the Office of Law is with me. Resolution one twenty-two is asking the council to ask the voters through a charter amendment in the two thousand and twenty-two election to authorize the creation of a public financing system for county elections, for county executive and county council. This is a similar system that the state used or that the state has. Governor Hogan actually used a public financing system in his first election. The system is voluntary. A candidate can decide which way is best for them. Several other jurisdictions have approved or are in the process of implementing systems. Montgomery had a system in the two thousand and eighteen election, which by all reviews was extremely successful. Howard County's voters approved a resolution to their charter and are setting it up for the two thousand and twenty-two election. Prince George's County also voters approved in the two thousand and eighteen election, and that one will be in place in the two thousand and twenty-six election. Baltimore County, their voters approved in two thousand and twenty. They're setting it up now and doing the implementation work with the plan for it to be implemented in the two thousand and twenty-six election. Baltimore City is implementing theirs for their, they're off our cycle. They're on the presidential year, so theirs will be in place in, in two thousand and twenty-four. So a voluntary system of public financing of elections, what it does is it allows qualified candidates to run for office by collecting small donations and receiving matching public funds. This system would ban the participant in public financing from accepting large amounts of special interest or large contributions from individuals, corporations, and packs. So this is, is a system that we believe will help build trust in, in county elections as well as allow, allow members who are residents who are looking to run for office, another option to raise the funds to do so. If the voters were to approve this in the two thousand and twenty-two election, the earliest election that this could be set up for would be the two thousand and twenty-six election. So we'll hope you'll ask the voters, and we hope the voters will approve.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Ms. Hare, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think this may be a question for Mr. Trump Bauer or Budget if they are here. I know the fiscal note says that there's no fiscal impact for the resolution, and that makes sense because it's just the resolution to go on the, on the ballot, but that obviously if a system like this is implemented, there is a cost to the taxpayer because it is, becomes part of the county budget. Do we have any information from those neighboring jurisdictions that have already implemented it? In what kind of funding this takes from the budget and what kind of dollar value that is to the taxpayer?
Mr. Trump Bauer, if I may, before you tackle that, I will add the specifics of how and what the matching levels are set at will govern what the exact amounts are. I know we do have it up from, from Montgomery County. I don't have it at my fingertips. I'm sure we can get it. Mr. Trump Bauer.
Thanks, Chris Trump, our Budget Officer. No, I was essentially going to echo that. Like, there's obviously, there's no fiscal impact with, with this charter amendment because we need, we need approval for this, and then whatever the cost is will completely depend on what the council passes to set the system up, and that can look a number of different ways. We haven't in the Budget Office done a comparison yet to look over at the other jurisdictions to find out what they did. Perhaps that is something that we can do before this bill comes to public hearing.
That would be super helpful. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Ms. Pickard.
I'm slow on my Zoom today. Thank you, Allison Pickard, District Two. As we look, because this is a two-step process, I'm curious about the timeline with the, with the charter amendment. Does the charter, I guess I should know this. Does the charter amendment, if it is approved, dictate the timing of setting up a program, or would the council come back and set up our program in a way that makes sense for us fiscally and everything else? That's my first question.
Well, the, the charter amendment would require that it, by July two thousand and twenty-four, the county establishes what that system would look like for two thousand and twenty-six or after. And so.
I see. Okay.
Couple of different ways that this could work. We could, you know, introduce the system before the voters would approve it, contingent on voter approval, or you can see if the voters approve it, and then the council that, that would be in, beginning in two thousand and twenty, December of two thousand and twenty-three, would have the responsibility to implement it based on the, the facts that they know at that time, current fiscal situation and all of that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Or did I make it worse?
Well, I think you meant December two thousand and twenty-two, but.
Did I? Yes, I meant December.
But other than that, that was fine. Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up or another question?
Go ahead.
It would definitely be helpful to have, to understand how other, both the state and other jurisdictions set it up. I don't know if it's necessary before we put it to the voters, I guess it is, to have a better understanding. I'm not very familiar with the public financing world. I know the state has had a program for a while. I assume it's a little tricky to budget for since it's both voluntary, and we haven't set up any caps or... So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Howard County has been building their public finance bank, I guess is to say, before they implemented it. Like, you can't just pass it, and then you have to budget for it. I'm curious how, it sounds like a hard thing to budget for, I guess is my point, without understanding who's going to use it, and if there are limits to how much public financing one candidate could receive. Do, I have all these questions. Sorry, this, I'm really not being appropriate, Madam Chair. Do other jurisdictions that are, like Montgomery County, so a school board member candidate can access funds to a certain amount and a, or no?
So the state enabling authorization to create this is only for local offices. School board candidates, believe it or not, are considered state offices. We actually looked at that question. So we could not authorize for our Board of Elections, or Board of Education, excuse me. To your question on banking money, that's exactly how Montgomery County did it and Howard County did it, and I believe the state does it. In fact, the state, because they can find, if you ever file your campaign finance reports late, which I know none of you would ever do, the, the fine that you are assessed actually goes into that fair election funding. At one time, there was a check off, or there was a move to put a check off at the state level on your taxes, so people could voluntarily contribute to it. I know they have one at the federal level for the three dollars for the federal fund. I can't recall, and I should have thought this through before I opened my mouth, if the state, there was a move to put a check off for the state. I don't recall if it happened. If it would be helpful to the council, I will pull together both to Councilwoman Hare's question and to yours, Ms. Pickard, some information from neighboring jurisdictions about how they built their bank, and, and finally, what the limits are. Every county that has put this in place, to my knowledge, has put some sort of cap on the max that people can get. So the way Montgomery County works, you're able to get a certain amount of dollars, I think it's up to two hundred and fifty dollars from any county resident. And if you get that contribution from a county resident, it's matched at certain levels. And I think the first fifty dollars is matched at a certain amount. The next fifty dollars is matched at a lower amount, and so on up the chain until you get to just a no match from that individual contribution, and then you can't, can't take any additional funds. And if you were to take funds from a non-county resident, it would not be matched, and you would be prohibited from accepting a large amount. I think you're capped again at that two hundred and fifty dollar level. So from there, the county will match up to a certain level. In Baltimore County, where they just passed it, the candidate for County Executive can get a match up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of county funds. So you would have to build up that ladder to get there. And then I guess the question for, if, to your point, Ms. Pickard, how you budget for this, there theoretically could be ten people that would run and could all qualify to the max, but the practical impact of that is that rarely happens, and Montgomery is probably the best model to look at because you can't throw a stone in Montgomery County without hitting somebody running for office. All respect to her.
All right. Ms. Pickard, you have the floor if you'd like to ask a follow-up question.
Thank you. So you're, Allison Pickard, District Two. So, Mr. Baron, your, your answer sparked another question. It's so confusing, though. If, if, oh, never mind. Sorry. It's just, I have lots of thoughts about this running in my head, and lots of questions, but I can save it for. I can.
I know there wasn't a question, Madam, Councilwoman Pickard. I will say, what I can offer to do is, is pull together some of that background of what other counties have done and send it to the council. I believe this will be heard on, on February seventh. I can send it to the council in advance of that, and we can have a more robust discussion either offline or on the seventh.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no additional questions. I know Mr. Pruski is going to be back any moment, and I know he wanted to talk about the two items that he has on our agenda today, but he did give me statements to read. So I'm going to go forward with his, the statement about Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-one. It's, it's a very straightforward charter amendment that would be put before the voters, and basically, you know, I'm going to read exactly what he, he wrote to me. The question is, do we have to make the Veterans Commission a part of the charter? Anarundel has the second most veteran population in the state, and the question is, should the commission be a standing committee in Anarundel County? And, okay, and I'm sorry, I just got another message from Mr. Pruski that he's still running behind. So basically, it would allow the voters to make the Veterans Commission, you know, sort of a more permanent part of our county government in light of our large number of veterans in the county. And again, that'd be put, if we vote at five, at least five votes, it'll be put for the voters. And then the other bill is regarding, let me, sorry, I'm scrolling through my, okay, the other bill is five dash twenty-two. So we're going backwards to, back on page two of the, bottom of page two of the agenda. This is basically a bill that would offer sort of cleanup for coin operated machines. So think of, you know, like the, the claw machines that you see in restaurants. The economics have changed with these over time, and, you know, in terms of how much money they generate for the folks that have them, and it's basically just trying to sort of rebalance, rebalance the economic equation with respect to changing economics about coin operated machines. So unfortunately, it looks like Mr. Pruski isn't still, or still is not here, but he encouraged folks to please email him if you have any questions about it, and I'm sorry, I'm not able to answer any more questions about it.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may?
That would be fine. Thank you.
Just for the benefit of the council, the Administration. Just for the benefit of the council, the administration on five dash twenty-two on the coin operated. Amusements worked with Mr. Pruski in the crafting of the bill. We support the bill. And on sixty-four twenty-one. Again, the administration supports putting this in the charter. We've done this with a couple of. Our commissions. We think it raises or clarifies the importance of the commission as. As this council knows, this administration has has worked with our Veterans Commission. We've appointed an actual part-time staffer to be a Veterans Affairs Liaison. We have been taking and working on these issues very seriously. I imagine any future administration. Would do the same as us, but it hurts, it does not hurt to raise the profile of this. Commission and add them as a as something dedicated in our charter. So happy to answer any questions on the admins position. I do have some experts here. Particularly on on the coin bill from IMP Miss Velez and from Law, Mr. Ritter. If there are any questions of pinball or claw machines, I'm sure they're experts.
I was actually going to ask them if there's anything they could add to just help the council understand this bill since they are here and they've taken the time and have been waiting. So, Mr. Ritter or Ms. Velez, if either of you would like to just comment on bill five dash twenty-two, any insight or. Feedback that you have, I'd like to give you the opportunity to offer at this time. Mr. Ritter, why don't you go first?
All right, so it. Essentially, this is a rewrite of. The. Coin-operated amusement devices section of the licensing section, it clarifies the three different licenses. Before the cutoff was a class E license was by each individual device. You'd have to have the license itself stuck to that device. And I believe that went up to nine devices, and class I license was for distributor, but it was also required for anyone who wasn't. Who was obtaining a class E license. And then class FA license was for the larger arcades that had more games. So it was a license per location. This, this essentially changes that to allow the class E license to be up to a higher number. And it's just one license per the site in the same manner that the class FA license was. And it converts a class I license to more of a pure distributor license. So if you're someone who. Who owns the game but leases it, rents it out to other locations in order to install them there, then you need a class I license. But if you're the owner who owns a location, installing the games you own at the location you have, you don't need a class I license anymore. Aside from that, there are a number of sections just cleaning up different existing issues in the section. Such as. The requirements for the application, the suspension revocation language. It removes the prohibition on prizes and sets the prizes at a minimum value that mirrors the state licensing language. And does away with the prohibition on having. Claw games, pinball machines, a coin operates operated amusement device with a thousand feet of a religious facility. Or school that I'm not sure when that came into the code, but that was also removed as part of this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Before I go to questions, Ms. Velez, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I feel Mr. Ritter covered it all.
All right, thank you. Then I will go on to a question from Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica here, District Seven. This is less of a question and more a comment on the charter amendment for the Veterans Affairs Commission. I just, I like this, this charter amendment. I think it's great. I was just going to say the Veterans Commission has been doing a lot of really cool work. And actually, just last week, and they've done this before also in December as well, they had partnered with one of the American Legions in my district. To hold some luncheons for homeless veterans, and they're doing a lot of really cool stuff. They've got a great hotline for anybody who needs help. So anyways, this was just a, just a comment to say I'm happy to see this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Hare, and I'm going to jump back to coin operated amusement devices. And ask a question for either Mr. Ritter or Ms. Velez. So the effect of these changes in the licenses with this, am I under the correct impression that this would generally bring the cost down? For, you know, businesses that locate these coin operated machines in their in their businesses. I think of, I don't know, I think of like. You know, the claw machine or a video game machine like a Denny's or something. Would the overall effect, is that kind of where it's headed?
Yes, um, under the previous, under the current code. It is, they're required to have a class I in addition to the class E, which is two thousand dollars for the class I and then your hundred dollars for each machine. However, if, you know, Denny's owns the machine and it's in their location, now they would only need the class E license as opposed to both licenses.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have additional questions before we close out today's meeting? All right, well, seeing none, thank you to everyone for being here today. We will see you all again at seven PM on Tuesday, January eighteenth. We are on Tuesday instead of Monday due to the Martin Luther King Junior holiday, and we will be back in the council chambers and back at seven PM. I'll see you then. Have a good day. Bye.